Once again, we come before your presence, giving praise, glory, and honor to your most holy name. Thou art God, the great I am, Alpha and Omega, the beginning and the end. Father, we come before you with humble hearts and bow down heads, first of all thanking you for this day. You have allowed us to see another day, then you blessed us to assemble here in this great city hall. But Father, we're asking that you would be with us, lead us, guide us in everything that we say and do and think. And we ask, Father, that you would give us unity of the Spirit and in the bonds of peace. Father, we ask that you would bring the nation together on one accord, that we might be a great nation again. And Father, we ask these blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Ames.
Here.
Mayor Proton Philshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Gitts.
Present.
Councilmember Page. Absent. Councilmember Samuel. Absent. And Councilmember Mouton.
Present.
Thank you. We don't have any presentations or proclamations today, so I will move right into public comments. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to speak on item number one, item number three, and item number four are the consent agenda. The time to do so is now. The other items will either have a public hearing or have already been heard in a public hearing. So right now is for one, three, and four are the consent agenda. If you would like to speak on one of these items and you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip and hand it to the officer in the rear. We will call out your name. We would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. I will open up the microphone at the end of the meeting for general comments if you're here for that purpose. And we do have a couple of public hearings today, so if you would like to speak on one of those, I will open up the microphone at that time.
We don't have any mayor.
There's none? Okay. Counsel, have you, can I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
May we approve the consent agenda?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number one, please.
Mayor and Counsel, item number one is to consider a resolution approving a contract with First Transit Incorporated for the management of the Beaumont Municipal Transit System. The city's transit system currently operates ten fixed routes with seventeen buses, and we also have an ADA door-to-door service with eight small buses or vans. The city owns these vehicles along with the transit offices, the repair shop, fueling station. For decades now, a private firm has operated the system for the city of Beaumont. The drivers, mechanics, and other staff work directly for the private company. The current operator, Beaumont Transit Company, has chosen to not seek renewal of their contract, so a request for proposal process was initiated, and two responses were received. Both were evaluated according to the criteria outlined in the RFP. First Transit Incorporated received the higher score. The contract would provide for a term of three years with two successive one-year extensions. And just to give you a little background, First Transit Incorporated, they've been in business for more than sixty-five years. They operate at more than three hundred locations across the country, including twenty-seven in the state of Texas. If approved, the contract would become effective upon execution, with management responsibility transferred ideally by the end of this month. And be happy to answer any questions you have. Chris Boone led this effort. He and Todd Semenow are Chief Financial Officer, and Jess Prince served on the selection committee. Turn it over to you at this time.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, you've heard the reading of item number one. Is there a motion, please?
I can motion.
Second.
There's a motion for approval and a second. Is there any discussion?
I've got a couple of questions, Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, on the first page of the memo, I'm sorry, on the second page of the memo, top line, talking about the things that are included in the annual calls, ridership studies is listed as one of the items that is covered. Can you explain what that is?
Let Chris come up.
As the manager mentioned, we had two responses to this bid. We have invited both respondees to this meeting in case you have specific questions. But specifically in response to your question, Councilman Neal, as part of the implementation with First Transit, within the first six months, what they are planning to do is bring in their consultant to analyze the system, and that would include passenger counts, farebox revenue analysis, a study of all the routes and all the schedules. In addition, they would conduct a customer survey. And then finally, they are, given the number of systems they represent and manage, they are engaged in and would be looking at innovations, whether it's on-demand transit elements or micro-transit, these are some new trends within the industry, they would also be looking at that. So that would be included in the cost of the services.
That's included in the $200,000 per year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next question I have, on page four of the management agreement, under section seven, compensation, it has the five years of fees. Those fees are different than what is written.
Correct. So on page four, that outlines the cost of the management fees, so that would be going to First Transit. And it's a little different than on your memo. On the memo, it is that cost plus the expenses for the managers, the general manager's salary, which is $125,000. So basically, that's the same number on page four, plus 125.
Okay, last question.
Yes, sir.
Page five starts talking about more the operating expenses. How do we handle operating expenses? Is that a straight pass-through back to the city with no fee?
So the way the system works is, apart from the costs that they cover, management, payroll, things like that, the vast majority of the costs are funded by the city, tax dot and FTA grants. So essentially, they just, they pass through the cost to us.
Okay, so if First Transit goes and buys a tire for the bus, we're not paying a fee for that?
No, sir.
Okay.
So, no, sir. But we are paying for the tire.
Any other questions? Councilman Samuel.
Who was the other applicant?
Yes, sir. So the second bidder was Esprit Johnson Enterprises LLC, DBA, Big Red Services, and the contact person on that is Philip Johnson.
I didn't receive your information in the document.
Councilman, you have anything else? Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
So it was strictly based on the score sheet and not the lowest bid?
Correct. Correct. So it was an analysis of the categories listed there on the third page. And again, it was a committee looking at qualifications of general manager, experience of management firm, understanding local conditions, operating plans, and then cost proposal.
Okay, one other question. Will First Transit honor the union contract agreement that's in effect?
So again, both, I think representatives from both bidders are in the audience. I will say that in First Transit's response, what they have stated in their response is that prior to start of the contract, that they will address employee benefits, including the establishment of a retirement plan similar to the money purchase plan currently in place and arrange for the continuation of current health care benefits. So what they've conveyed to us is their intention is to simply continue as much as possible all the benefits.
And so the current drivers that we have will not have to reapply with the new company? They're just going to stay intact?
So I may defer that to the company. They may have to reapply, but what they've conveyed to us is that other than the general manager, Mr. Munson, who owns Beaumont Transit, all, their intent is for all employees to come over to the new company.
But you're not sure if they will have to rehire?
Well, they may have to because of the company being different, but...
They might have to, they might have to fill out an application, but I would defer, I do have, again, I've got Larry Morris and Jared Varner, regional vice presidents with First Transit.
Sure. So as the mayor mentioned, she's absolutely right. So there's a transition in the company. The previous company will no longer exist. So as a formality, the employees will need to apply, but at this point, we anticipate, it's just, it's more of a paperwork exercise, getting all their information, making sure that our files are accurate. All employees that are in place now would be offered employment with the new corporation.
Okay. I have another question for you, since you're at the podium. There was an incident with your company where an employee was fired for delaying the bus route due to the fact that they wanted to make sure that their mirrors were safe. And one of the first things in your manual is that safety is first with your company. But then this bus driver was fired for requesting or checking his own mirrors, but by reporting it to maintenance, which delayed the bus from running on time. This employee was fired. Is that a normal practice for your company?
This is the first I've heard of that instance. It's not something that I've been made aware of, and it clearly didn't occur under the Transit Management Division, so I'm not familiar with that. But no, safety is absolutely number one. And I mean, our motto is, if you can't do it safely, don't do it. So we would never ask an operator to perform an action that they feel is unsafe. We're adamant about empowering operators and technicians to fulfill their duties safely.
Okay, and so you're not aware of the incident at all?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Did you have something for these gentlemen?
Is there anything that requires to make an action today that would present us from having at least a week of review?
So the current contract with Mr. Munson expires at the end of this month, and in anticipation of the winning bidder, whomever it may be, they are going to require a good deal of preparation to get in, basically to get up on the ground and up and running, because there's going to be a lot of things that need to be done. So having said that, we would certainly encourage the decision. We would prefer this week, just because we are, we are running short of time.
And we have two other council meetings before the end of the month.
I believe, I believe so.
I would like to have an additional week to make a decision.
Your mic is alone.
I would like to have an additional week to consider what's been presented today. I have a couple of questions in my mind, but I don't think they can be answered right here.
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
Does the other company that submitted bids have any experience moving people?
So the other bidder is certainly a local company and has a lot of experience in trucking. So they do have extensive experience in that, but in terms of a public transportation company dealing with tax dot FTA and all of those regulations that we have to deal with in order to be reimbursed or receive grants, they do not, don't appear to have that experience.
So, Chris?
Yes, ma'am.
So if I'm missing something, I apologize, but Councilmember Mouton made the comment that it was based on just the criteria, not the bid. Do I, is the bid for the other company in here? I don't see it.
The dollar amount?
Did I miss it?
Well, it's not listed on the scoring sheet, but the dollar amount is in their bid. We can certainly get that to you.
Is it in our packet?
No, ma'am. The responses are not. I can say that dollar for dollar, they're very comparable. I think the total for Big Red was 226,700, depending upon the year, compared to First Transit, which ranges from about 217 to 220. So dollar for dollar, it appears First Transit is a little bit lower in terms of price.
Is there a problem with pulling it and...
Okay, I'm just so confused now, because if, how do you know that it's less if it's not in here?
Exactly.
I mean, how do, did you...
Well, because...
That's the concern.
Well, I didn't know, because we don't have the other information.
Okay, I just thought you said that it was only based on this criteria, but not the lower price.
It is based on the criteria. It's not based on the lower price.
Because the other company was a lower price. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. My estimation was they were a little bit higher, 226,700 per year, whereas First Transit ranges from 217,9 to 220.
But that wasn't in the package.
Yeah, I just was wondering how you knew that. I just...
No, I just asked, I just asked a question.
All right. Okay.
And Mayor?
Yes.
Chris, you speak of their experience, this company. Then is safe to say that this is, this would be their first contract of this nature?
For Big Red Services? Yes, sir. Based on their response.
Thank you.
And how long did you say First, my friend from Cincinnati's been doing this?
Over sixty years.
Sixty-five?
It's in the packet. That is in the packet.
Mayor?
Yes.
Chris, is the, Big Red, is that a local company? Yes, sir. Okay. But no experience in operating buses? No, sir. It's essentially a trucking company.
Okay. Okay. So Councilmember Samuel's asked that we wait a week. I understand that that might put some, can we ask First Transit if we do wait a week, if they will be able to be ready, because we don't want to not have buses if, I mean, if the other company goes out?
We can ask.
So, sir, you heard the concern of the council member that he wanted to wait a week. Is that going to put y'all on a bind to start for October 1st?
So typically, we ask for about six weeks to do these transitions, because we're working with employees. We want to ensure that their benefits are seamless, that the pension program is seamless. And so we're looking right now at two and a half weeks. So we're already, we're already actually kind of starting, to some degree, just getting a game plan for how we tackle this. It will not be possible if we don't have kind of the notice to proceed until next week, to be done by October 1st.
Okay. Is there any other questions that these gentlemen could answer that would help you make a decision, Councilman?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. And Chris, you said the other applicant is here?
I believe so. Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Johnson, do you have anything you'd like to say, since the other company did speak?
Yes. I've been in business twenty-five years in transportation. I've moved all type of commodities and everything, just not humans. But everything else, I've never failed to not move it safely. Okay? I will be retaining all staff members with, that's employed right now. So I have employees that's twenty-five and thirty years on staff. So my lack of experience at transit, I would have with that staff. But twenty-five years of managing with payroll and all of the other duties of the manager and operator, I've been doing it for twenty-five years.
Okay.
I have a safety rating with tax dot, with Federal Motor Safety Carriers, that's satisfactory. So...
Any questions for this gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Okay.
So, did you have a question for him?
Well, it appears...
Is it for him?
No.
Okay.
It's for Chris.
Okay.
It appears from what the gentleman said, that if we don't act today, that literally the contract ends, and we literally might have people that can't catch the bus because it's not operating.
What will happen in that case, Chris? Will Beaumont Municipal Transit stay on?
They've indicated to us that they will not. Now, that's not to say that, you know, we can't try to figure out how to make it work somehow, but what is clear is that we can't, we cannot operate the transit system directly. But whether that we can make that work for a number of weeks, I would think we could. But...
Councilman?
Mayor, I guess the appropriate procedural way to do this would be if there's a motion to table this, to vote on that motion first, but based on what...
I was just trying to get everyone the chance to ask.
I understand, but I think I've heard enough to make up my mind.
Okay. There has been a request to table this. Who made the motion, please?
Our group.
You did?
To be tabled.
Okay. So you're requesting that be tabled, and you are rescinding your motion? Didn't you make a motion?
No.
No.
I was asking who made the motion.
Councilman Neal.
Are you willing to rescind your motion? Don't I have to do that? I think I do.
No, ma'am, I'd like you to call for the vote.
Okay, how about the second? Who was the second?
Second.
And did you want to call for the vote?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of that motion, please indicate, sorry?
I'm sorry, ma'am, read the note. Councilmember Neal made a motion, and Councilmember Page seconded.
Oh, okay, it wasn't you. Okay, that's what I was trying to find out. Are you rescinding your second?
No.
You're going to stay with your second?
Yeah.
Okay. I apologize, I might not have been clear. I was just trying to make sure that the motion was off the floor, because...
Yeah, he was called for the vote, so I was, I...
You're gonna, you were second. I got you. Okay, all right, got you. All right, well, there is a motion and a second on the floor. You're good, Tina?
Yes.
Okay.
To accept this as written.
Exactly. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Two nays. The motion passes. Next item, please.
Mayor and Counsel, item number two, we ask that you hold a joint public hearing to receive comments on the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget and the proposed 2021 capital program. After the public hearing, there is an action item.
Okay, thank you. So before I go through everything, is there anyone that was here to speak on the budget? Does anybody know? Is anybody in the back?
No, ma'am.
Nobody's here? Okay. All right, so there appears to be no one for the public hearing, city manager, and did you already read what you need to read, so I can call for a motion or no?
We ask that you consider a resolution postponing the final vote on the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget to September the 22nd, which is next Tuesday, 2020.
Okay. So this is the action item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we, the public hearing is closed. Counsel, is there a motion for item number two?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Okay, now we have another public hearing for the tax rate, but no action item, right?
That's correct. Mayor and Counsel, we ask that you hold another public hearing to receive comments on the 2020, which is the fiscal year 2021 proposed tax rate. For background, a public hearing is required if the proposed tax rate, which is 71 cents per $100 of assessed value, exceeds the lower of the no new revenue tax rate or the voter approval tax rate. The proposed tax rate exceeds the no new revenue tax rate by 2.8 percent, and the Texas property tax code requires that the governing body announce at the public hearing the date, time, and place of the meeting at which it will vote on the proposed tax rate. It is recommended that this date be set on September the 22nd, 2020, at 1:30 p.m., here in council chambers at City Hall. You don't have to vote on that, I just need to announce that, but you do need to hold a public hearing.
Okay, there's still no one here. I'll open the public hearing. I'll close the public hearing. If there's no one here, officer, no, okay. All right, thank you. The public hearing is closed. Next item, please.
Mayor and Counsel, item number three is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Beaumont Independent School District regarding the school crossing guard program. City of Beaumont entered into an agreement with BISD back in May of 2017, which required the school district to manage and administer the program and its employees. The city agreed to provide payment for 50 percent of the actual cost, not to exceed $90,000 per year. And the agreement was for a three-year period that ended on June the 30th. BISD is proposing that we renew the agreement with a provision that it automatically renew each year unless terminated by either party, the not-to-exceed amount, which again is $90,000 per year. That language is in the proposed agreement, which is attached for your review.
Thank you. Counsel, you've heard the reading of item number three. Is there a motion on this item?
I don't know for approval.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Is there any discussion? Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to propose an option for a three-year deal that's non-renewable. $90,000 the first year, $45,000 the second year, and $22,500 the third year.
Okay, there's been an amendment to the motion. Is there a second on that amendment?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for the amendment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
I'll shut out.
Okay, the motion passes. Next item, please. Next item, please.
Okay, so first year, just to recap, first year is ninety thousand dollars, second year forty-five thousand, third year twenty-two thousand, five hundred.
Correct.
Those are amounts not to exceed, or those are probably set amounts, I guess. Ninety thousand probably is a not to exceed. This year, we actually paid eighty-four thousand the last twelve months. So, how about a ninety thousand not to exceed, a set forty-five thousand the second year, a set twenty-two thousand, five hundred the third year? Is that all right? Is that, just so we're, when we draft this back?
But we would also like wording in there to where it's not automatically renewable.
Okay. So, it's a hard three-year agreement? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Mayor and Council, item number four is an ordinance entitled an ordinance terminating the declared state of disaster made necessary by the imminent threat of Hurricanes Marco and Laura and repealing ordinance number twenty dash oh four one, which extended the adopted emergency powers as amended, uh, made necessary because of the public calamity resulting from Hurricanes Marco and Laura. The administration recommends approval of this ordinance terminating the previously declared state of disaster. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Counsel. You have heard the reading of item number four. Is there a motion on this item?
So move.
So move.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. I'll now move to public comment. And I don't know, maybe there's someone in the audience, but now is the time for anyone who wishes to speak. If you would like to make comments today on any item, now's the time to do so. As I mentioned earlier, we appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium and the red light will come on when your time is up. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak? And there's no one in the other room? Okay, I'll close the floor. Councilmember comments? I'll start with, um, you, Councilmember Getz.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this past week, we lost quite a personality who was present at the polls almost all the time. Uh, I'm speaking, of course, of Mark Bleeden. Um, he, uh, was a, a gentleman, a guy that was friendly, gregarious, and would, uh, come out to the polls and offer water to people from both sides of, uh, an election. He'd bring, uh, his grill out there to Rogers Park and cook hot dogs and offer them to everybody. Uh, he's going to be missed. So, uh, thank you for allowing me to remember him.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember?
No comment, Mayor.
Okay. Councilman?
No comment.
Councilman Pate?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. In addition to Mark, and Mark was a great guy, we also lost, uh, Jim Critten and, uh, Jim, along with Terry Garth and his family, were actually the owners of Tricon, uh, and, uh, up until the early nineties when they sold it to, uh, the Sarkis family. Uh, Jim was a retired Army Colonel, uh, just a very fine gentleman, uh, raised a great family. Son was an Eagle Scout, I think his grandson as well. But he was just one of those guys that, when you say an officer and a gentleman, he was one of those guys that fell into that category. On a brighter note, uh, for the first time since nineteen sixty-seven, Beaumont, Texas is hosting a women's professional golf event. It's called the Women's All Pro Tour. Uh, it's the Babe Zaharias Open, which is what it was. When Babe, who grew up here in Beaumont, for those of you that don't know, uh, uh, the first Babe Zaharias Open was in nineteen fifty-three. And Babe won that event. Unfortunately, while she was here, she discovered she had colon cancer and only lived about three more years, but still managed to win a US Open in nineteen fifty-four by twelve shots, playing with a colostomy bag. So, it's quite a legacy to have the world's greatest woman athlete, uh, his name on a women's professional golf outing. The, uh, we have, there's seventy professional women golfers playing in this tournament, uh, from all, literally all over the world. And it's quite a reflection on the legacy of Babe Zaharias. Uh, it's being played at the same place that Babe won the first one at the Beaumont Country Club. Uh, the response from the community has been phenomenal. We had a pro-am today. We didn't have enough, we, we ran out of carts. I mean, we had to call a halt on the teams that wanted to play because we just didn't have enough carts for all the people that, that wanted to participate. And that's a direct reflection on the kind of community that we do have. Uh, the tournament will be over on Friday. Uh, if you would like to go out and watch, uh, some really fine professional golfers, uh, I had some friends that played and said, you know, here's this girl, five-five, hitting a two-hundred-and-seventy-five yard drive. And of course, they're not hitting it that far. Uh, they're just in awe of the talent that we have. And this particular tour is a development tour of the Ladies Professional Golf Association, which Babe was one of the original founders in nineteen fifty. Matter of fact, if it hadn't been for Babe Zaharias, there wouldn't have been a LPGA because she was the star and continues to be. And, uh, so I think it's going to be great for our community. Uh, I will tell you that any of the funds that exceed the cost, because everybody's working on this thing, is volunteering, uh, will go toward the renovation of the museum and our visitor center. And that's a real positive thing for our community. So, uh, if you get a chance and want to go see some really talented professional golfers who will be on the tour, uh, they'll be playing in the morning, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Uh, and we'll bring it back next year as a symmetra tour, which the top ten players in the symmetra tour get their cards for the LPGA. So, it's a, it's a real positive thing for our community, uh, and the response from the community, which we all know because we all work on so many other charitable organizations, uh, has just been phenomenal. And I can't thank the people enough for making it such a success. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Samuel. Councilmember Muton?
No comment.
Okay, um, I just have a few things. I just, I want to, uh, talk a little bit. I've had some requests and calls this week about our venues and when will we be opening our venues? And, um, I, I am going to ask, and if there's any councilmembers that want to ask anyone else, I am going to ask Dr. Orfeen to come and speak next week. I am still talking to him on a daily basis. Um, the hospital's had a little jump this week. He doesn't know if that's going to be normal or not. But right now, um, we're running about forty in both hospitals and about thirteen of those are ICU, but he had originally said thirty to thirty-five and, and that was not ICU, by the way. The, the main thing that he says is whatever we do, and this is why I want to bring this up today, because I like to hear from staff, um, whatever we do, we have to be very, very careful. Uh, we don't want to be in the same situation we were in many weeks ago when our numbers were climbing and we were down to our last ventilator in the city. And I'm very mixed on it, but, um, I, I just, we fol- have to follow the governor's orders, which is fifty percent. And, um, so I know there's some members of council that want to open and some that don't. And, um, I want to just have all the facts before we make another decision. Um, the facts being if we can, I mean, what happens if we do open them up and the people, it's a wedding and they don't follow the governor's orders? Who enforces that? Um, masks are required in public buildings. They would have to wear masks. They would have, we would have to be at fifty percent occupancy. I don't know if we can do that or not, and I'm not proposing that we do. I'm just asking the questions. I'm just bringing them up. One of the things that was said, and I'm hearing, um, that other doctors are saying different, that some of those doctors don't care, take care of COVID patients, but I invite any physician in our city that has a different thought on this than Dr. Orfeen, you're welcome to talk with us and you're welcome to send emails. Um, he's just been, uh, one of the ones that has been communicating, uh, with us or with me at least, um, because I ask him to, and is actually taking care of a lot of COVID patients. So, if there was any other physicians out there that would like a voice, I'd love for you to have one if you take care of COVID patients. One of the things that was mentioned is if we get, if we were to get, we're about forty right now, but if we were to get up to seventy-five patients again in both of our hospitals, that we would have to make, take immediate and drastic measures. I'm very concerned about opening things up and then having to close them again. We know that most of the COVID that's being spread is in, uh, social situations, um, bars, restaurants, mostly, uh, bars that have, restaurants that have bars. Bars aren't open right now, um, per the governor's order. So, um, as I said, he has agreed to come speak next week. Um, Counsel, if you know anybody, if there's any other physicians out there that would like to, um, talk with the council about this on either side of it, um, I think the council would be more than happy to listen. If anybody disagrees, let me know. But, um, I just want to kind of get us an update and also want an update from staff on how we can handle this, if we can handle this. I'm not saying that I want to do this. I don't know what to do. I just, um, afraid I don't want to put any people at risk. It's our responsibility to do everything we can, no matter what everyone else is doing. It's, um, based on, to me, it's based on what we think is, uh, safe to do for our citizens. And like I said, I'm not there yet, but I do think we need to have a discussion on it. I'm not asking that it be posted as a, uh, action item unless there's other councilmembers that voted the other way that want to do that, but I am asking that we have it posted to where we can, that we talk about it. Okay? Any problem with that, anybody? We can't have a discussion on this, though. Sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Would like to make a few comments, Mayor.
Sure. And I, and I, I did not talk with Kyle about this before the meeting, so I apologize if I popped that on you, but.
No.
This morning was a busy morning.
Different subjects, ac- actually.
Okay.
The council voted to remove the Confederate soldier statue at Weiss Park, and the City of Beaumont has an ordinance that, uh, lays out a process for the sale of surplus property. And you have to determine what the value is before you can move forward. And I've kept y'all abreast of what we were doing. So, we hired a company, uh, to conduct an appraisal. That's been completed. I'm just going to hand that out to you. And then if, you know, council wants to move forward in a certain fashion, you know, y'all have your rules of procedure that lays that out, so be happy to do that.
Okay. So, this is what, is this pleasure given us? It's the?
This is an appraisal of the statue itself.
Okay.
Tell you what they think the value is.
All right.
Thank you.
You may be surprised at what the value is, but I would tell you to read that page that I've marked, and it'll give you a pretty good example of what a, uh, statue, uh, that was actually taken down in the city of Dallas was sold for last year. And, uh, so you'll have.
Okay, so this is a, um, a bid that we got, and I noticed you didn't say the number. Is that because we would have to open it up for bids from people?
Well, competitively bid, there's different ways to do that.
I just want to make sure we don't say anything we shouldn't say.
This gentleman is, exactly. We're not supposed to have any discussion right now, and this gentleman's actually recommending that you not disclose what's in here at this time, but, uh, you needed to have a copy of it, so.
Okay.
I'll, uh, wait to hear from you on how we.
So, as far as the procedure for us, though, in Beaumont, we, do we have to go, I mean, what would, if, if, I mean, what would be the procedure if the council decides to move forward in selling it? What would we have to do?
It says the sale must be to the highest and best bidder after there's been an opportunity for competitive bidding.
Okay.
And, um, so.
All right, so.
Probably best to bring it back in a work session and just talk through the steps forward and see if there's agreement amongst the council to move forward in that fashion.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. I don't see the city attorney, but I see Sheree. Anything for us, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, um, that's all I had, so now we don't have an executive session, so we appreciate y'all coming. We are adjourned. Thank y'all for coming.